Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the December meeting here and we will now move for approval of the agenda, including the amendments.
So moved. Second.
All right. Trustee Rios motioned and Trustee Townsend second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, approval of the minutes for the September, that's not right, November 18th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Trustee Townsend and a second, Trustee Maddox. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Audience to patrons or petitioners, is there anyone here today that would like to address the Board of Trustees?
All right.
Seeing none, we'll move to item number six, communication. Madam President or your designee.
President.
I have one item of communication. It's from, it's from Elaine Lelios, Associate Professor at Bowling Green State University. And it's singing the praises of the 2013 Electronic Music Midwest that was hosted here at KCKCC by the music program headed by Dr. Shirley Walker. And I have a copy of that program to pass around and I believe that I should just read a part of this because it was so inspirational and it pays such tribute to the music department and that program that was put on here. My sincere congratulations to you and everyone involved in planning a highly successful 2013 Electronic Music Midwest. What a fantastic event. It was a true pleasure to spend the weekend with you, the other festival guests, students and community members sharing our creative adventures. Please also accept my sincere thanks for selecting my work from among the huge number of submissions. It was a pleasure to be included with so many other great electro-acoustic composers. Wow. I also appreciate the time and effort you put into making sure my extensive percussion and technical setups were planned in advance. We got fantastic gear from Van Hansen and our tech rehearsal ran smoothly thanks to your efforts ahead of the festival. I know how much work goes into these festivals and commend your selfless efforts in this regard. EMM brought on, brought an exciting weekend of new experimental music to the attendees, to your community and especially to your students who I'm sure were inspired by the event and by your interest and encouragement of their musical explorations. Further, you and your staff were professional, accommodating and everyone's can-do attitude made EMM an uplifting event. I thoroughly enjoyed my visit and the opportunity to hear more about the great things happening at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. I hope you'll visit us at Bowling Green State University where we'll welcome your creative ideas, enthusiasm and of course, your music. Thank you again, Dr. Walker, for a wonderful visit and for your generous hospitality. Sincerely, Elaine Lelios, Associate Professor, Composition Coordinator of Music Technology at Bowling Green University. Thank you.
Wonderful. Yeah, Dr. Walker, thank you. Who designed the cover for the, that's clever.
That's been used.
For a while?
For a while. I can't say it's their official logo, but that's.
Yeah, I think that's the first time I've seen it. It's the junction of Roads E and MM, Electronic Music Midwest. Pretty awesome. Congratulations. Yes, what a wonderful letter.
Yes.
That's it for communication? All right. Move to item seven, which is the President's report.
I have a good news presentation to make to Dr. Marvin Hunt, Jay Matlack and Marsha Gray. If they will come forward, please. Oh, I'll sit so I can be heard. This is from the Sunderland Foundation at 1101 Conde Street in Overland Park, Kansas. Ah, you thought it was that kind of news, didn't you? It's written to Dr. Doris Givens. We have received your request for a grant from this foundation for the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. The Board of this foundation has approved a contribution of $40,000 for the development of the Business Innovation Center. We are pleased to be able to support the Kansas City, Kansas Community College and wish you every success. Sincerely, Kent Sunderland. Okay, so I am going to pass this to Dean Hunt and recommend that he pass it to Vice President Bodine so he can deposit it in the council. And Melinda Kimmel for assistance with writing the grant. Thank you.
Well, congratulations to everyone there and now Jay will be able to raise that bar on that innovative stuff, all right? All right. Okay. It's already up there pretty high, I think, but some great things going on, so wonderful. Creativity and innovation, that's what we want to be all about.
Yes. And on Thursday of this week, December 19th at 5:00 PM, KCKCC Phi Theta Kappa, the Tri County Labor Council, Proct and Gamble, the New Light Christian Fellowship, Shriners Temple Number 33, and storytellers in partnership with Kansas City, Kansas, Kansas City, Kansas Housing Authority will sponsor the 15th Annual Christmas in the City Program. Christmas in the City serves approximately 1,000 low-income families living in public housing and Section 8 that have children ages 13 and under. Santa will visit. Every child will receive a toy and/or a bicycle and families will receive frozen turkeys. Thursday, December 19th at 5:00 PM at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. And if you have never been here at work when that happens, please hang around and move quickly because the children riding the bicycles and the tricycles down the hallways will run you over because they have only one plan and that's to get to the end so they can turn around and go back again. The 91st Annual Candle Lighting Ceremony was held on December 4th in the Performing Arts Center at 9:00 and 11:00. The music offered by our music students and professors was absolutely beautiful. It was a wonderful event that invited us all to participate in the carol singing as we officially ushered in the holiday season. The banquet that was held on Friday night when the weather was so bad, when we just knew that this terrible awful storm was coming, it didn't come, at least not like we thought it was going to come. But the banquet, the Coach Al Hobson Presents a Night with the Olympians, despite the inclement weather, was a wonderful event. We did have a couple of tables where there were no people seated, but it was a huge crowd and it was amazing to meet those athletes that we saw on TV, from the ones who did the Black Fist to the ones that we've seen recently participate in the Olympics. It was just an amazing event. I can't remember if any other administrators were there except Dr. McDowell. If you were there, raise your hand. I can't remember. But Dr. McDowell was there and it was a great event. So next year, hopefully, more people will attend from the college. There is a pin and a program at every place for the board. Those things, those items were given out at the event, so you have the information about who, what athletes were here and the program.
Thanks to Trustees Townsend and Funder for attending, I believe, as well.
Yes.
So we appreciate, Clyde, thank you for being able to represent.
Yes.
And finally, our Strategic Plan Development Team Update Report. When we began with the end in mind, one thing we knew, in the words of a French writer, off-the-rack solutions like bargain basement dresses never fit anyone. So we knew we had to write and implement our own unique plan. After the writing, we stepped forward into implementing the plan. Academic year 2013-14 is a year, is year one of our implementation phase. We have made bold steps toward plan goals and we are excited to share our movement thus far. Dr. Denise McDowell and Dr. Sankey Min, who are the co-chairpersons of the Strategic Plan Development Team, will provide an update to the Board of Trustees at this time.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We have provided for you some updates and we have that on the table, but we also noticed that we have a correction for you there as well. We have had a semester full of wonderful activity and we're not going to try to tell it all. We're going to try to make this presentation update for you in 10 minutes or less. And so we're going to go through some things rather quickly because they're just reference points. What we really want to pay close attention to are the accomplishments for this fall. Sankey and I will kind of go through the presentation that you have before you. We have displayed there our Strategic Plan Development Team. As of this moment, we have one new member who has been added and that's Dr. Bas Abeline, who has been added and will be a part of our team for the remainder of this academic year and forward. And we have in here reference materials because you will see throughout your Board of Trustees report this time where deans and directors linked their activities to the strategic plan. What you may not have recalled is what does SD1G1.3, SD1.1.4 mean? So what we did for you in this document is to outline for you what all those things mean. So as you were looking at your board report, you will see what SD, which simply means Strategic Direction 1, Goal 1.1, Action Step is AS, and they would have used three numbers, a 1.1.3 or 1.1.1. So we just provided that to you as a reference. What we have, as you know, is a strategic directions that deal with developmental education, strategic directions and goals that deal with student learning outcomes, with institution-wide commitment to student success, directions that deal with improving and leveraging technology and sustainable best practices, dealing with responding to workforce development needs and also improving the image of our college and working on climate and culture at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. What we have on each work group this semester that we think is a pretty good accomplishment is that we have about 15% currently of our full-time employees who are engaged either in one work group or involved as a work group leader or member. We have another 45% of our employees who are engaged in the strategic plan and what we call unsung heroes. They are those invisible heroes and sheros that work behind the team, the scene on a subgroup, such as the administrative assistants who are working on a subcommittee, working with degree audit, whose names will not appear on any work group or as a work group leader, but their work is very effective. We also have individuals like Peggy Friedman and Merle Schrader who are responsible for helping us with brochures and PowerPoints and agendas and sending information out, whose names will not appear on any document that you see. But we also have all the faculty who are involved in one of the learning outcomes, who again, their names will not appear on any document that you will see. As part of the accomplishments for this year, you will see several, and again, we tried to connect them to the strategic direction and the strategic goals. Some of those accomplishments, and I won't try to read them all, have to do a lot with redefining our developmental education. What is that here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College? Vetting the mandatory advising process. We want to implement mandatory advising for students who are placed in one or more developmental classes. We have approval to invite a Dr. Vicki Kelly, author of the Faculty-Focused Assessing and Assessment: Five Keys to Success, who will be here at our January end service to talk with our faculty. We've launched the SOFT Financial Literacy Program for our students. We have planning and implementation of degree audit, identifying terminology and placement of data collection templates, offering the Fleet Program in conjunction with the Kaufman Scholars Program. We've had two sessions of diversity training at the TEC for their faculty and staff. Our Board of Trustees, you're an example of our accomplishments with your iPads that you're using to receive your Board of Trustees reports. We also planted a tree this year in honor of the lives and memories of deceased colleagues. We've purchased over 40 recycling containers throughout the campus. We've drafted an RFQ for marketing services and developed and implemented Target Marketing Direct Mail Campaign for TEC involving nine cycles of annual printing. These are just a few of the things that I've mentioned. You see a whole list of them that we've actually implemented this year. Sankey will talk about some of the challenges.
Some of the challenges that we have so far, I hope it's not too great challenges, but one of the, one of the things are the effective communication with students because of their incorrect addresses and also defining key performance indicators. Some of the data that we're trying to collect has to be defined first before we try to collect. So that was one of the difficulties that we had. And also divisions and faculty at widely varying spots on student outcome assessment. We mentioned term like assessment. The scope of the term can be varied widely among different divisions and according to their knowledge about the assessment. So we had to do something about defining the terms. And also identifying a video conferencing platform that is, that is friendly to, not only to students, but also our staff, that we have to find some solution about the user-friendly solution, technology solution for advising. And also getting colleges to agree to the SOFT program and taking data collection requirements to deans and determining the best solution for some green and sustainability initiatives such as greenhouse project. And texting capability is being delayed to clean data files and archive the old and redundant information. And not in the 2013 and 14 budget greenhouse and upgrading the exterior of CEB and signage in back landscape and concrete repair. And we need 40 more recycle bins and also plans to purchase more efficient items as needed to replace aged machines and equipment and appliances. And also secure a full-service agency with the defined scope of working RFQ and limited funding were some of the challenges that we experienced.
Among the challenges we also had this year was again, trying to keep all of our work groups engaged, having an opportunity to meet with some of our work group leaders to understand better some of their challenges, trying to clarify and encourage our work groups not to get stalled on the fact that there was no designated line item, budget line item for them. And as you can see, they were not discouraged. Many of them did a lot of work this fall despite that fact. I think we now have work group leaders much like ourselves who are understanding the amount of time and the commitment involved in engaging an entire campus, community in such a lofty project. But none of the individuals who we have worked with and speak with monthly and we meet with the work group leaders monthly, they submit a report monthly and the items that you have here are a mere reflection of what has been accomplished. We cannot tell the whole story and submit all that they had accomplished or you would have pages and pages and pages of documents to leak through.
We appreciate that.
What we'd like to do at this time is to thank not only the Board of Trustees, but the faculty and staff and administrators for their time, commitment and engagement in the implementation of the strategic plan. But we'd also like to do a special thank you to the Board of Trustees for entrusting the campus community with this important task. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you Denise and Sankey both. Questions, board members' comments?
Yeah, I, pretty quick read, but question would be directed, Dr. Givens, to you or the vice presidents or who, as I, as we look through it and we have things we want to ask about and get more clarification, who would those be directed to?
You can direct them to me.
To you?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And I would urge you, you mentioned the budget, I would really urge you to try to put some, you know, we're going to start the budget processor pretty soon and I think your group, your group needs to start thinking about what you need. I mean, what, what's out there? I can't guarantee you we could do it, but at least it should be coming to us with some kind of request on some kind of funding for some of these projects because very ambitious and I'm sure it's going to cost some money.
Yes.
We have thought about that, but one of the things that happened this year is that people have been pretty creative. They, some of the things that they have done as a way that they do their jobs have been included in the strategic plan as outcomes and those did not come at an extra cost to the college. So we are looking forward to a budget line in this year's budget, but we're also looking at creative ways to use the money that we already have.
Much appreciated that faculty and staff are able to do those kind of things without some additional funding. I guess there'll be some of this stuff that's going to require, especially getting to the technology and curriculum and there's going to be some money needed for some of that, so.
And if we can just do a gentle reminder, if you recall at the beginning of the year, we submitted a three-year budget to the board in year one, year two, year three, which I think it was somewhere in the 300, 350 range per year. And I think this year, we have tried to be as frugal as possible, but I think more of us is going, are going to have to take Dr. Hunt's lead and get some grant funding as well to do some of the wonderful things that we've, that they have planned in that particular strategic direction and some of those goals. But some of the individuals are doing just that, trying to be creative, looking at grant funding, and we will have that second year budget that we can re-sement for the Board's consideration.
Thank you Denise. Excellent.
On that, on the, not to overdramatize, but it does seem to me for the strategic plan, we talked about the linkage between the budget. The budget should support the strategic plan and it's in the dailiness of the operation so that the budget, for the most part, over the last few years, has been kind of funding what we've been funding, but the strategic plan is to guide us in different new directions. So you can't necessarily continue to fund old strategies, activities, et cetera, and then thinking you're going in a new strategic direction. I think that the deans, along with their staff, would need to start looking more, I term it zero-based budgeting, but there could be other terminology, to say you, this is where we're headed now, what are necessary to support getting to that end and then in those discoveries, well then some of the pathways, not that they weren't honorable and did good work for us, but because we're heading in a new strategic direction, may be passe. And so I think that that's kind of where we're, you know, not looking for a new line item that says X number of dollars for a strategic plan because a strategic plan should be addressing what we are doing every day. Shouldn't be a separate, but a part of what, what we're trying to be about on a daily basis. So I, I'm not necessarily in total sync that it needs to be a separate line item, but that it needs to be within our operations and living, you know, the work that we're doing. Anytime we're appreciative of the grants and all that, that's additional work, but I'm hopeful that we can find ways to take our current budget and reshape it so that there isn't needing to do even additional work and trying to find money where there is money that we just need to spend it in a different way.
And I think what I'm hoping, we're hoping that as you read your board a report this year or this month and you look at how we started linking the strategic plan, that the sentiments that you are sharing is what we are attempting to do. And so this month was the first month that we attempted to link the strategic plan to the items that we submitted to you to show and demonstrate that we are doing just that. Our minds are beginning to move in that direction, that we are engaged in embracing that concept.
Yeah, that was very much appreciated Denise. I know that takes some work for people to link those up, but it really does, keeps it in front of the board and it keeps it in front of the faculty and staff too, that these things really are linked, so I really appreciate the effort.
It's good when you drop those breadcrumbs for us.
Yes.
Cause they're right along there. Right Clyde? Okay. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Great report.
Good job.
Thanks to anyone else.
That concludes my report.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to accept the President's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Givens. And so Dean of Human Resources is what I show here. Ashley Odermark.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here today just to highlight a few things that have been going on in human resources and we have had a great fall semester with the great United Way campaign, tremendous support from the faculty and staff and Board of Trustees who came out to the celebration event that was on November 20th. We thank you for your support. Just also want to mention that even though we're going into the holiday season of eating and drinking and drinking and being merry, that our faculty and staff are becoming more and more health and wellness aware with the Wellness Committee that is being sponsored from Human Resources. They meet on a very regular basis, recently held some screening sessions where a number of employees, I think about 40, came for various health tests. We also have a newly formed Weight Watchers group on campus. So any of you that are interested, we invite you to join. And they decided they wanted to start before the holidays and they've already had their first meeting, so they're on the way and they're sending us emails and everything about how we're supposed to eat healthy during the holidays. So we're going to all try to follow those so we can be healthy and well in 2014. Also would like to draw your attention to the new committee that's been formed for the Clary Act and Title IX Coordinator.
Yes.
And this is a very important group that's going to be doing some important work on our campus in the future. The members are Jason Severs, Doug Welch, Andrika Will Coxon, Barbara Clark Evans, and myself. And basically we'll be working with training, faculty and staff and students on reporting of crimes that happen on our campus and also reporting sexual harassment, sexual assault, and those types of actions and crimes that occur on our campus. We'll also be offering the students some training on how to be a bystander or a good bystander in, in helping their student peers, you know, in case those types of, they get themselves into trouble. So these are some things that we've been involved in. I also want to invite you to come out tomorrow afternoon between 1:00 and 3:00. We'll be saying goodbye to one of our very dear teammates in the Human Resources Department, Paula Warren, who has been with us for four and a half years, will retire and her last day of work will be this Thursday and she'll be greatly missed. That's my report.
Dean Marks, a couple of questions. Do you have our tabulation for United Way?
I don't have it with me at this time. I think it was on the report last month.
It could have been.
The total was on the, on last month's report. And I can get it for you.
It would be nice. I don't recall it.
Okay.
And then on the committee?
Yes.
That I, was, is our campus security chief, is he?
Jason Severs.
Deputies on there?
Deputy chief.
As long as somebody's represented. Okay. All right, that's all.
Move approval of the report.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to accept Dean Marks' report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dean Marks.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, agenda, item eight, I'm sorry, nine, Vice President for Academic Affairs, and we'll hear from Dr. Vitale.
Thank you. Before I get into my written report, there are several things I want to bring to the board's attention. And most of them have to do with faculty. The first recognition I'd like to make today is for Tiffany Bohm with our Physical Therapy Assistance Program. And on December 4th, we received a letter from the Commission on Accreditation in Physical Therapy Education. And basically they've reaffirmed our accreditation, which isn't really surprising in and of itself. In fact, that's expected. The, you know, the commission made their decision based on a self-study that was turned in in January of this year, visit report with the institution response that they received in May of this year, and then comments from the program director and comments from the team leader. They noted the graduate performance, and I'd just like to highlight some of that for you. The graduation rate for our students from 2008, 2009, and 2010 was about 81.5%. For the nation, it was 76.8%. The licensure examination pass rate for the years 2010, 11, and 2012 for Kansas City, Kansas was 98.39%. For the nation, it was 91.94%. The employment rate for graduates from 2009, 10, and 11 from Kansas City, Kansas was 100%. For the nation, it was 98%. So they're doing an outstanding job. And then, of course, the letter had all these notices that come along with it. And then on the last page are the two paragraphs that we're most interested in. One is entitled "The Commission's Findings," and I'd like to read that for you if you don't mind. "The Commission on Accreditation in Physical Therapy Education judged the program to be in compliance with the intent of all the evaluation criteria for accreditation of education programs for the preparation of physical therapist assistants. The Commission appreciates the thorough and professional manner in which these obligations have been addressed." Then the second paragraph is entitled "Commandation." Commandation. "The program and its faculty are to be commended for its efforts as it worked through each stage of the comprehensive program review process. The organization and comprehensiveness of the program response to the visit report made the program one of the easiest for the panel to review in many years. The ongoing compliance of a high-quality physical therapist assistant education program is validated further by the outcome from this commission meeting." So I'd like to recognize Tiffany Bohm on the great work that she and her colleagues did in preparing this report and just highlight once again that they have made a point of commending it and recognizing it as one of the easiest for the panel to review in many years. So this is just, they did an outstanding job. I don't think we could recognize that. Thank you Tiffany.
Can we just have her tell us how easy it was?
We can. I'd love for her to tell us how easy it was. But you have to use a microphone Tiffany.
I actually have copies if you would like to keep one. We're kind of proud of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure. Thank you.
I don't know if easy is the word I would use.
Thank you.
We didn't say it was easiest for you, we said it was easiest for the reviewers to follow.
I'm a little bit taller, hopefully I get it up here. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to tell you about what a wonderful program we have. There's a couple of things that I just want to share that aren't in that report and I think is so wonderful is the team effort that this was. And it starts with the support that we get from you financially, both in the human resources that we have to provide our program, but also financially to purchase equipment that we need and to support our students. And so that's super important and we are, are very thankful for that. I also want to just give a commendation to a couple of the people who helped us the most, Dr. Wendell and Dr. Aga Joffre, who reviewed it multiple times and again and again and again, and they reviewed both the initial submission as well as our response. Mindy Neip, who is absolutely wonderful in all the administrative support she supplied to us. And then when they talked about that response, there were a couple of things that they asked us to clarify and we were very blessed that Mr. Bodie and Dr. McDowell and Mary Dorr were able to provide us some of the information that they needed for that response. And I know that that was very helpful to them because we probably would have been given some things to, to do in the future. So we certainly are appreciative of that. As well as the faculty, we had to have general education faculty come to interviews, we had to have support staff come to interviews, and all of them came willingly. I remember one of the reviewers has done over 100 visits and he said that it was the friendliest group of support staff that he had ever had the privilege of interviewing. So I was very pleased to be able to, to share that with you. I do also want to just share, because this is probably the, the best part for us, is they have 309 total programs and at most you can go 10 years without going through this miserable process. And in the last time that each of these have gone through, there have been only 10 programs that have escaped, and I will use that word escaped, without further reports and have made it for the 10 years. So we are, are one of the 10 of 309 and they actually did 118 schools at the last visit and there were only three of us that were able to achieve that. So we are so very thankful for the resources that we have to be able to do this and the college support that we have. So thank you very much for, for that.
All right. Well, that's just great, wonderful, wonderful news report. Any questions for Tiffany? Any questions, any comments?
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you for being such a leader in that program.
Okay, the next recognition actually goes to someone in the six months I've been here. I think this is the second or third time we've recognized something that Darren Elliott's debate team has done. But that's good, we want to keep doing it. I don't know if Darren is still sitting in the back, there he is. But the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Debate Team ended the semester ranked number one in the community colleges. And I think there's still a little more work to do before it's officially the, the number one program again for the 11th consecutive year. But it also is second in the nation among all colleges and universities, which is an outstanding accomplishment in and of itself. And for the first time in Kansas City, Kansas Community College history, we have a debate team, Brian Gonzaba and Matt Cassis are one of only 16 teams in the nation that were invited to the Val Browning Round Robin at Weber State University, January 25th and 26th. This is the first time we've been invited to the National Round Robin and Kansas City, Kansas Community College will be the only community college in the tournament. So that's a great accomplishment Darren, to you and your debate team. So I don't know if you want anything to add?
Dr. Mike, you should get used to it. I mean, we've kind of grown accustomed to it. I know it's new to you, but.
First of all.
We're sort of.
I apologize for my finals week attire. It was about 30 minutes ago when I realized I was on the agenda. If I'd have known I was speaking to this illustrious group, I would have worn my nice tennis shoes. But I've given Tracy Bridenthal a copy of the national rankings report. Not to correct Dr. Vitale, but after the press release came out and the final results from Northern Iowa went in, we're actually ranked number one in the country among all colleges and universities. She has the report that she can pass along to you. It lists the top 10 rankings in the country as well as the top 100. And this is the first time we've ended the fall ranks number one in the country overall. This was due in large part to winning tournaments this semester such as Georgia State, Central Oklahoma, Weber State. And we ended December winning the varsity division at the Northern Iowa tournament, beating the University of Michigan and the University of Minnesota en route to winning that tournament. So to beat a couple of Big Ten schools was nice. As you mentioned, we also have been invited to the Weber Round Robin in January. 16 teams got invited. I'm also excited, if you didn't see the press release, that one of the other 16 teams is Wichita State. Two people you have seen before this board before, who are two of our alums, Kristen Russell from Lansing, Kansas, and Ryan McFarland from Hutchinson, have transferred to Wichita State and they're one of the top teams in the country right now. We've debated against them twice this year, we're 1-1. I watched one of those debates and it was very painful because I thought no matter who won, I wasn't real excited about having to debate them, but they're doing really well and we're excited about that. The two gentlemen that are going to the Round Robin and two of our other debaters are being recruited right now and they're looking at University of Oklahoma and Fresno State as possible places to transfer to. So we're excited about the fact that they're getting that opportunity and it's getting to go to those tournaments that gets them that opportunity and gets them seen by coach, other coaches nationwide. The last thing I'll say is that, you know, the success that we've had this semester again is due in large part to the support we get from the faculty and the staff here, but certainly the support of the board and the vice presidents and the dean of humanities and everybody on campus. In addition to all the debating they do, our debaters serve on the Student Senate Committee, the College Senate, other campus committees. And this semester spent over 200 hours at the local Urban Debate League Debate Kansas City, working with high school students. And so they're spending a lot of time in the community in addition to the time they spend debating. And so we're excited about this and to be ranked number one right now is also very exciting because we passed a couple of schools we have a little bit of a rivalry with. One of those is Liberty University and the debaters were really excited when those national rankings came out at the end of last week and we had bumped above the number two spot to number one. So we will try to maintain that momentum as we go through second semester. But again, I appreciate your support and recognition and hopefully they continue to make the college proud and, and work hard. So thank you.
Outstanding. We're running out of adjectives, you know. Where do you go from there, you know?
Thank you.
So congratulations Darren. Thanks once again for your outstanding reading. Dean Smith and the construction technology folks are going to have to be busy on that larger trophy display.
Have to build a much bigger trophy case.
That's right.
Also from our Division of Humanities and Fine Arts, one of our English faculty members, Greg Ventello, had an essay that he wrote recognized in the Best American Essays of 2013. While Greg's essay wasn't selected in the final cut to be printed in the compilation, his name and essay title do appear in, in the heading notable essays. So that's another accomplishment for one of our faculty members here at KCKCC. So I think that's a great activity as well.
Dr. Vitale, could you email that, a copy of that essay to us?
I can, sure.
Would you?
See if I can get a copy from him.
Yeah, you can get a copy please.
It's das Schwein und Hund is the title of the essay. All right.
It's not in German, is it?
It is, I don't know if it's written in German, but.
If it is, don't send it.
No bother. Yeah, man.
Anyway. And along with personal recognitions, I'd also like to, to note that Dr. Edward Kramer, dean of the Division of Math, Science, and Computer Technology, was elected to the Board of Directors for the American Association of University Administrators for this next year. His term runs through spring of 2015, so that's another good accomplishment. Also want to let the board know that, you know, we had to do a new site visit for our tech center with the Higher Learning Commission. The individual came and visited, I think it was around November 11th, and we got her report back a few weeks ago. And we were approved without any further monitoring, so that's about as clean as we can get. We're doing everything we said we were going to do and that we were doing, so they were pleased with that, that visit as well. Along with that line, as I mentioned in my report, Dr. Sonkey Ben and I attended the Pathways Pioneer Meeting in Chicago, November 20 through the 22nd. And it was a great experience for me because it was a whole learning experience for me. But one of the things that I appreciated about that, that visit was all the schools that were there were really volunteers of this, truly a pioneering thing, a, a trial, if you will, of a, a new way of the Higher Learning Commission to look at how re-accreditation is being conducted, the self-studies, the visits, et cetera. And what I took away from that meeting was that as a, as an agency, the Higher Learning Commission was turning to those colleges that were part of this experimental process to get feedback as they roll it out to most of the institutions in the Higher Learning Commission. That they were really listening to what the faculty and administrators who participated in this had to say over, over the, in their experiences and how as an institution, the Higher Learning Commission could learn from it, modify what they were doing as they rolled it out to all of the, the colleges in the Higher Learning Commission. So it was a, a very worthwhile endeavor from my perspective. Also, I had the opportunity, December 8th and 9th, to travel to Coffeyville with trustee chairman Don Ash and trustee Mary Ann Flunder for. chairman Don Ash and trustee Mary Ann Flunder for the KACC and Council of Presidents Meeting. And, while we were at several of those together, there were some individual committee meetings that we attended separately. I attended the funding one where the, they discussed funding opportunities for the state, et cetera. And, I also got to sit in on the Council of Presidents' agenda, where they had a list of ideas. And, probably three of the biggest things that they talked about were the Senate Bill 155. One of the things that they are in the process of doing is preparing a document that will be sent out to all the presidents that clarify the residency requirements for Senate Bill 155. There's been some confusion over that. The other big, major issue is the State Authorization Reciprocity Agreement, or CERA, as it's referred to. This is in response to the Department of Education, which has come out and said that if you are offering online courses in a state other than where you are physically located, you have to go through a process, whatever that state's process is, to be licensed or to be authorized to offer courses in that state. For example, we would have to go through it in Missouri if we had students living in Missouri that were taking our courses, et cetera. And, what this reciprocity agreement is, is Kbor initiative to, to do this blanket authorization for colleges, so that we're not all out there individually trying to do this, which is a very laborious task to do that, and so forth. And then, the other big issue with the, dealt with the Kbor and the reverse transfer agreements. Kbor is really pushing what's called a reverse transfer agreement, and this is where we would have a student who would not quite finish the graduation requirements for Kansas City, Kansas Community College, or one of the other community colleges, transfer to a four-year university, get the degree, and then we're left without a completer. Well, with the reverse transfer articulation agreement, this would allow then the institutions to simply transfer back to us the credits necessary for us to award one of our former students with an associate's degree. Students, what they're talking about is students would be in it unless they opted out of the process. Now, one of the, one of the biggest concerns that we talked about and was discussed in the Council of Presidents' meeting was the fact that, right now, the number of credit hours is 45. A student has to have earned 45 credit hours to qualify for it. Well, many of the institutions were concerned about that, because they, they, and I'm sure even we have students that complete a year here, maybe 30 credit hours, and then transfer on to a university. And, so, we don't get that student as a completer. We don't get any credit for that, even though that was the student's intent all along. Go to, go to Kansas City, Kansas Community College for a year, save some money, whatever the reason for that, and then move on to one of the universities. So, there was still some discussion about whether it needed to be 30 credit hours or 45 credit hours. And then, the question came up, well, what do you do about those students that attended maybe two community colleges? Maybe they attended some at Johnson County Community College, they attended Kansas City, Kansas Community College, now they're at one of the universities. Which one of the two community colleges would get those credits and get...
Kansas City, Kansas Community.
Well, I agree with that 100% JD.
And, I think our attorney should make a, write a bill to that effect.
Maybe, maybe what we should do is propose that any student in the state of Kansas that has attended more than one community college, the institution that they actually graduate from regardless is Kansas City, Kansas Community College.
I know.
All right? Whether they attended regardless. But, anyway, that was from that thing, and...
Don't encourage you.
Okay. All right. And, I'm looking at my notes on my iPad, and I think that that hit all of the items I wanted to bring to you. Now then, if you have any questions about my report, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Now, this is probably just my technical...
Sure.
Are the performance agreement narratives part of your report, or is that separate?
Well, I, I attached them as part of my report, simply because they were approved by Kbor in the last month, and I mentioned that. And, I thought that we, I don't know that we ever brought them to the board, and I thought that the board needed to see those performance agreements.
All right. Well, I just wanted, because I had a question.
Okay.
In the narrative in Indicator 5, increase the number of Hispanic students enrolled at KCKCC, and I understand that Kbor is already approved. But, I, in the narrative, it speaks about the percentage that the, our service area has about 26% Hispanic population, and it, but the community college is about 12%. But, our baseline and what we're looking at is numbers. We were at, I recall from the report, not scrolling through all this, I have like 990, and now we're at about 1296, or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Which is about 20% increase. But, but we're, again, we're going, we're comparing, we're talking about percentages, but then we're analyzing in numbers. Now, maybe our research director can correct me, but I think you're apples and oranges.
Yeah.
Shouldn't we be comparing apples?
One of the reasons that we did not report in percentages is that if we simply report percentages, sometimes what happens is that if, even if there is no increase in Hispanic population, if one of the different ethnic groups, like African-Americans increase in proportion, and relatively speaking, the Hispanic student percentage goes down without even going down in numbers. So, we try to avoid that situation. Or, even the other situation is, without increasing any Hispanic students, if some of the ethnic groups decrease, like African-Americans, in percentages, it looks like that Hispanic students have increased in proportion. So, we just wanted to have the absolute numbers to go up, and at the same time, watching the percentages. That's what was our intention to be.
And, I think part of the, the reason for the percentages in the narrative was to make the point to Kbor that, that we recognized that we needed to get, we needed to raise that absolute number of Hispanic students, and it was, I think, a little easier to show in the narrative a comparison using what our current percentage is versus what the percentage is in the, the population that, that we're serving.
Try to, try to tell them that how important...
Right.
...this particular indicator is by showing the number discrepancy between our community versus our college percentage population. But, we're trying to make an effort, trying to increase not only numbers, but the percentages too.
Okay. And then, remind me, where the baseline number came from?
Baseline number is basically average of three years.
The average of three years?
Right. The three years that we show there, the nine, the 990 and the 1100, and the 1200, average out to 132.
Okay. So, we're always trying to be better than the baseline, right? We show improvement?
That's correct.
Yes, yes. I mean, you're trying to increase your baseline each year.
Okay. All right. I'm with you. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good questions, good clarification. Wendell?
I have a question under Dr. Kelly's report. Has to do with the, the meeting with the members of the Center for Research and Community Development. And, it's regarding the, they wanted to determine the statistical effectiveness of the developmental education program. My question is, what's the outcome of that, or is it a work in progress?
I think that's still a work in progress, isn't it, Sankey?
In terms of improving our developmental education, we need to do some clearing in terms of who our developmental education students are. For example, there were some discrepancy in terms of definition, whether to include students enrolled in Math 104. We all, some group of our staff says those students are developmental, and some of them said those are not. So, we had to clarify who exactly are developmental students. Depending on that definition, we need, we, unless that is cleared, we can't really calculate any percentages or numbers. So, we had to work on defining, you know, how long does developmental education label last, for example? Do they ever graduate from developmental? I mean, if they meet all the requirements, that, then they will be off of that label. And, those kind of things we had to discuss before we move on to next step. So, that's one of the things that we've done.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate that committee. I think there's a lot of good things happening in Dr. Vitale's report, but that Developmental Education Committee is critical to our success in the college, because we have so many students that, like all community colleges, have so many students in that development education program. So, good work on that. I, I like the fact that you're trying to measure some things, and try to see what works and doesn't work, and you're doing some things for the students, and having some surveys. So, I think that's really an important, important group, but I think working with you around some statistics to measure that's going to be really important. So, look forward to reports in the future around progress and improvements. Thanks.
Any other questions, or?
Over approval of Dr. Vitale's report?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to accept Dr. Vitale's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Vitale. And now, we'll move to Vice President for Student Administrative Services and hear from Mr. Bodie.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Chevron Energy Management Project that the board tentatively approved last month, we were working through, and Mr. Nguyen is reviewing the contract with Chevron. And then, we had an offer from a financing company we were working on. And then, last Thursday, late 4:10 in the afternoon, one of our local banks put in a proposal to finance the improvements. And so, we are still going forward on that project, but we will not have any review for you today, nor will we ask you to be approving anything today, as we go through the analysis of a second funding option that came in late last Thursday. And, it's been provided to our fiscal advisor and also to the financial legal team that we're using to go through it. We were very happy, most of the other banks in town, it's not the kind of financing that they do, and especially in a fixed rate type of mode. But, Country Club got very creative, called in some other partners, and have put together a very, very impressive package for us to review. And, we just didn't have time in two and a half days to get all of that review and the comparison done, to be here today. But, we were very happy to have a second option.
Yes.
We should have all of that ready and, and ready for discussion with the Finance Committee, and then with the Board at the January meeting.
It really is a great thing to have that occurred, and then, and then with a local entity as even a plus on top. So, yes. So, we're, we hopeful, but again, we have to do the full analysis.
The second item I have on, on the agenda today is the state of Kansas Capers 457 Plan. I had one of our employees request that we researched this, and we did. 457 plans are another tax-deferred plan, and we don't belong to the, to the state of Kansas's plan that they have with ING. The good thing about a 457, it is not added to your 403B. If you are contributing, you can contribute the maximum IRS allowance under both programs, if you can do that. So, it's really a great shelter for, for people. And, I, I sent to, to Mr. Nguyen a copy of the resolution, and I don't think he had horrible conflict with it, but I...
No, I didn't have any, I didn't have any conflict with it. And, I understood, because I did take a look at the materials you sent me. And so, if you're asking if it's ready for board action, it is. And, the adequacy of the resolution is also sufficient, because all you're saying is, we'd like to explore this, because it's a voluntary option for your employees, and maybe one that is timely for some in particular. And, so, I didn't see any, I didn't have a chance to talk with the state rep up in Pika, but, and looking at it, it's nothing extraordinary here that we're asking the board to do, except to allow it to move forward before the end of this calendar year, so that you can begin it at the next calendar year, as I understand it, Mr. Bodie. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. Then, it's ready for your action, board, with minimal risk right now, because it's just the resolution.
That's right. And, the committee, Finance Committee, didn't, wanted to have legal review, and apparently we now have that. And, with Mr. Nguyen's consent, then I would move approval of the resolution.
Is there, is there a resolution?
Yes.
There actually is a resolution.
Might be want to read it.
If my comment is on the sufficiency of the resolution, Mr. Bodie, and nothing further, but yes, we're enthusiastic, obviously, about this opportunity.
If I may read the resolution. Resolution authorizing a deferred compensation plan for the employees of Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Whereas, to enable the Kansas City, Kansas Community College to attract and retain in its employment persons of competence, and to provide a means of supplementing the retirement benefits of these employees. And, whereas the ING, I-N-G, company has been authorized by the state of Kansas to administer a group contract in conjunction with the Kansas Public Employees Deferred Compensation Plan. And, whereas it is the desire of Kansas City, Kansas Community College to become a joint contract owner with the state of Kansas of the group contract. And, where it is the desire of Kansas City, Kansas Community College to encourage and support efforts of its employees to voluntarily participate in a tax-deferred compensation plan. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Kansas City, Kansas Community College. One, the employer elects to join and participate in the Kansas Public Employees Deferred Compensation Plan as authorized by KSA 7449B14. Two, the employer authorizes improved execution of a joint, a planned joint or agreement and contract joint or agreement with the ING company to implement a deferred compensation plan. And, further, the Board Treasurer, Brian Bodie, is authorized to negotiate and execute all necessary documents. Resolution passed by the Board of Trustees, Kansas City, Kansas Community College on, and hopefully that will say December 17th, 2013.
I have one question.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Now, I know trustee Maddox has a question.
My question is, Mr. Bodie, who, who pays the administrative fee for that fund?
Capers. There's no cost to the college.
Excellent. My kind of plan. All right. Any other questions? All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. My report is included in your packet today, and I would answer any questions that you may have. Had a couple from Mr. Daniels earlier that I, that I ordered. I did want to put out a couple of things specifically that I wanted to address. 15 students self-applied for who's who's in American students in community colleges. Our committee met last week, and all of those were approved. So, we will have 15 students recognized at graduation as who's who, candid, or members of who's who. And, Thursday, we have three companies who are, we had four companies, but one has dropped out. We have three companies bringing food Thursday to one area, and we have nine people representing all four of the senators, and Peggy, who are going to meet in a different room, and we're going to put them in white cardboard boxes, and, so that they don't know who provided what food, and we're going to have a taste test and a blind vote on which of these companies. We had six companies total that were interested in being in the deli. And, I'm not a taste tester, and so I'm not part of the vote. So, I just have tabulation responsibility. But, I did want to bring that to your attention. Hopefully, we can get that settled up Thursday, and over the holiday break, they can try to set themselves up in, in the deli.
And, is that true? Uh... And is that true that we have what I guess we would call national as well, vendor?
A local franchise.
Local and national.
We have a franchise holder of a national company who wants to open here, so. That's what, we're, we're happy with the candidates we have.
To at least have that option for that.
And then I will answer any other questions that you may have.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am?
Kathy?
I, I do have a question under college relations. What, what is the timeframe on, I mean, is the RFQ developed and going out? What is that timeframe for, for the RFQ for the marketing advertising?
We are finishing it right now. I think it will be published and put out in January.
And what's the turnaround time?
Probably four months, ma'am.
Mr. Bodie, my question was about the Veterans Retrain Assistance Program. What was, what was the funding source for that program and what happened?
Sir, I don't.
Is that DOD?
I don't know. Under which report, sir?
Let's see, the Veterans Benefits News.
It was in the finance.
Yeah, yeah. Was that something Congress eliminated?
It's like it's a budget cut, but what I understand it was part of a budget cut project.
The sequestration?
With their buys and hours, how long they can receive. It's, it's, we're concerned about their, you know, the, 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 the financial way. Many of those sources may also be eligible for other financial ways, but they may not have predation of.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Yes, I have a question. The athletic director made a proposal to the, I believe it was the Student Senate for recommendation on a proposal for a startup of an activity fee. Do we know the outcome of that?
And the Student Senate is continuing to do, to debate that and look at that.
So they did not come to a?
No, they did not come to a conclusion.
Okay. Then there was a talk of a replacement of a class wall with a studded she-walk wall in this, in the social sciences area. I was just wondering why. It's been a class wall for a long time. Have a need for privacy?
Dr. Givens's office, we closed the front end of the building.
Peggy's.
We, we closed, we closed off the glass in front of Peggy's office.
Okay.
For privacy and for security.
Peggy's no longer in the fishbowl.
No longer in the fishbowl.
For security and privacy.
It's warmer, okay.
So much.
And then I was wondering, Dean McDowell, how many students were we able to visit in the mini fairs at the high schools?
They're conducted at the school, so we're just invited to participate.
So you don't know how many?
We probably have multiple colleges, universities, they're, it's sort of like a fair.
It's, yeah. Yeah, I know how, it was in our gymnasium. But the students get to choose. They don't necessarily go to all and so that's why I was wondering if we kept.
They typically fill out an inquiry card and I can find out, I mean, taking that out of what they reported, but if it's in there, we have to.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Did you have a question, Rick?
Yeah, I'd like to draw attention to, again, I think a service that we're providing that's critical to this community and that's this financial aid application program that we go out, there's both thirty community partners assisting students and their families on how to, how to address the financial aid complexities. I know that's not an easy process and I think without our help and others' help, a lot of our parents and students wouldn't, wouldn't be able to work their way through this. I think that's, congratulating Mary Dorr and her group that's doing that. It's, I think it's an important service for our community to do that. So thank you to everybody who's involved in that. And we've been doing that for several years now with Denise. Yeah, I think it's great.
With respect to athletic director, I know we visited a little bit about possibly getting a presentation, maybe a broader, deeper presentation from A.D. Tompkins about our athletic programs and, you know, sort of an update and so forth at a future board meeting here, maybe January or February or so.
On how they're doing, on what, what's going on?
Yeah, just.
Or his, his dream about all those new facilities?
Yeah, his assessment since he's been here and, right, exactly, yeah. What is, what he sees is his vision and.
I'd like to, part of that report, just to have some information about how the drug testing program went first semester and.
We'll have that in executive session then.
Okay.
And then also campus police, I know we had Greg, one or maybe two officers that graduated at KLEC. One, yes, and he, you'd be pleased to know he's quite the sharpshooter. He won the Top Gun Award down there as the top shooter out of the fifty-four attendees, so you're in good, you know, you're in good hands here. So congratulations to him and to you.
We'll be providing something out of the campus police report. We, we have discovered a training source, a, a resource called Alice and we sent some guys to their first training program in Alice. And Alice is a response plan for an incident within a school or within a building. And we will be working that and getting some information together, take some training across to all areas of the school, faculty, staff and students.
Yes.
But if you watch some of the scenarios that they run, I think it doesn't take you very long to understand why that program is required. And we picked that up from a couple of the other Kansas community colleges who are implementing that and so we'll, you'll be seeing something in the next few months about Alice training.
Good.
And I'll make sure the A.D.'s ready with something in the January meeting.
Thank you. Ooh, approval of the vice president's report? Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve. Any other question or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we did not vote on the resolution at this point, so do you want to now make?
I thought we did.
I thought we did.
Did we vote on the resolution?
We voted on the resolution.
Yes.
We did vote on the resolution.
Yeah.
That's two you've missed. And you took me with you on one of them. All right, okay. Agenda item ten, finance.
Yes, I ask for the approval of payment of the bills as presented in your package.
Finance committee has reviewed and removed approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll pay the bills.
And then I ask for your approval of the financial reports that were on pages one twelve through one hundred and fifteen.
So moved.
Second. All right, a motion from trustee.
Anything from the finance committee we ought to be concerned with or anything that's good?
It looks, oh, wow, it looks relative, it's all relative. We have some, but I do want to say this was a month to celebrate in regard to, well, it was actually last, last month in November. I, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but we finally were able to demonstrate the lowering of our electrical use and the lowering of the amount of money we're paying even though we're, our cost per kilowatt is higher. We actually are paying what we, lower than we paid two years ago in 2011. So that was actually the goal. And so it's taken us a little while, but I just wanted to make sure that it was noted that we have in fact achieved that and hopefully that will continue as, as we move forward.
All right. I think we had a motion in a second down there to accept the financial report. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Under ten C, numbers one and two, I ask your approval of those two recommendations.
Finance committee reviewed and we move for recommend approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda item eleven, miscellaneous, calls for an executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed for a period of.
Chairman, I'm going to say forty minutes and I'm going to ask that you amend that to also include to discuss matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship.
All right, so the motion as amended for a period of forty minutes and if someone would care to make that motion? So moved.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
All right.
We shall duly noted. We have one objection.
That was just an echo.
Trustee Townsend, so we'll take our customary five minutes to transition and.
Can you tell me they put it on the front door?
Begin at sixteen fifty-nine hours.
We need it, it's cold in here.
All right, we're back in the regular session.
Why are we saving money on the, it's cold.
We've got agenda item number twelve, personnel, and that would include some things on the amendment, amended agenda, yes?
Move a, are we, move approval?
Does anybody feel the need that Dean Marks needs to be at the podium?
Not on that item.
All right. Go ahead, J.D.
Unless she wants to.
Move, move approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item thirteen, committee reports, are there any?
I'm going to pass.
Dr. Vitale essentially gave the report from KACC and so forth. I do have a copy of a presentation that was made to edify trustees about their financial and fiduciary responsibility. I'll be sure all the trustees get a copy of that. Thank you, sir. Item fourteen, unfinished business, is there any? Hearing none?
One quick thing, if any board of trustee has any, I guess, question or suggestion that they would like for the internal auditor to review, I have asked that he make a report in finance committee and then that probably be something that then I would report to the board on. So if there's something that you're wanting more research on or something, whatever that might be, please email me so that then I can have a conversation with he and Vice President Bodie to make sure that we are covering what you all would like to make sure is being examined.
Okay, good. Real quickly, I'll just take the opportunity to thank Ray and Joan Daniels for hosting again the holiday celebration for the, for the board in their homes so graciously. Thank you again, Ray. Everything is wonderful.
We enjoy it. Yeah, we enjoy it. Thank you.
Awesome. So, all right, now Wendell, go.
Jump in there.
What's your hurry? Come over here, Jerry.
Second.
Already?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We're done.